Friday, August twenty-second. This is a meeting of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District Board of Supervisors. Welcome. Happy Friday. We would like to welcome Reverend Spence. Is he here today? Chablis Spence? Hi. Good morning.
Morning. I just want to thank you again for allowing me to be here. Chairman Yorgro, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Real briefly, I wanted to talk about something real quick this morning. I know that all of you have seen the new guardrails on all the construction that's going up on I-4. It's everywhere, not just here. It's in Florida, throughout Florida. And these guardrails are designed to keep you from running off the road either into a dangerous or hazardous area, or to keep you from crossing the median to go into oncoming traffic. We've got guardrails in our life that God puts there. And oftentimes, we ignore those guardrails and we have to pay the price of that. So these guardrails are that feeling that you have in the pit of the stomach right before you're getting ready to say something to somebody that you know you shouldn't say. It's that feeling back in your head that thinks, maybe I shouldn't do this before I send that email, or before I click on that website. It's that still small voice that talks to you about a relationship that you're in, that you know you shouldn't be in that relationship, and it's not going to end well for anybody. God puts those guardrails up to keep us safe. I know in my life, I've ignored a lot of those guardrails, and a lot of the issues and problems that I've dealt with in my life and relationships have all been self-inflicted because I've ignored those guardrails. But God puts those there so we can have a productive, healthy, and happy life if we just follow them. But the best part of the story is that no matter how much we crash and burn in our career, or in our relationships, or in our family, there's somebody on the other side. God's there waiting to pick up the pieces of that. And that's the best part of the story. I agree. Well, your grace, heavenly Father, we come to you right now. We just ask that your presence will be felt in this meeting. Your Spirit will be strong in here, and that you'll just bless every man and woman that is here that's taken time to be here in this meeting and then contribute to the benefit of the district and the men and women that work within this district. We're so thankful that they've taken this time. Just ask that you'll bless their efforts, but not just bless their efforts on the job, but also bless their efforts at home and bless their family. Pray for your wisdom and insight in all that's being done here. Be with the men and women that are on the job today, protecting this community. Be with the men and women of our armed forces to keep them from harm's way. Thank you once again for this time again. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chablis Spence. Mike Cricus, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public speakers today? No? Okay. Moving on, before we move on to the agenda, we do have a big agenda today, unusually big. I know we try to move pretty quick, but we'll still try to move quick. I know somebody needs to move along today. But we will, if anybody has questions, please be sure to speak up today. I know we've got a lot to cover, so. Moving on to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda usually do not need discussion. Does anybody like to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? By the way, is Supervisor Ziegler on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Can she hear us? Supervisor Ziegler, can you hear us?
She is.
Maybe somebody could text her. I just want to make sure she can vote if she can hear us.
If she can hear us.
Okay. Is there, can we get her on so we can take her vote?
She can hear. I'm not sure why we're not hearing her.
Can we acknowledge her vote through a text, Mr. Payne? We're having audio problems?
Yes, we already have.
Okay. 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 So we'll let it reflect that Supervisor Ziegler voted yes via text message to the administrator. All right, moving on to management reports, six point one. Ms. Kabelousis, good morning. Management reports.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. I know. You were, you were clerking the meeting. Thank you.
We're sorry. A couple, couple, just real fun things to talk about for this month. Wednesday, we did, the district held a benefits fair, and we had over a hundred and fifty people attend, which is the highest that we've had in years. We had representatives from the Florida Retirement System, Nationwide, Signa, Humana. We had our HR, full HR team there, employee engagement committee, and our safety, safety team there. And honestly, it's probably the best we've had, and the team put a lot of effort in it. I'm looking to Michelle because I know her team, she, Mary, the whole group, put a lot of time and energy into it, and it even got the chief's approval, which is, you know, very hard to come by on a, on a regular occurrence. But it was just a great event and provided resources to our team, so they had people in front of them to be able to ask questions. And it was just a great event. Also want to, where's John? There you are, in the back, in Drew. Just want to recognize John Addy, who's in the room. He is our new manager of parking operations. He was selected from a strong group of candidates to lead our team, to oversee the three garages and the pedestrian bridges. And we are lucky. There was, there's a strong team there, and so I think it's great that we were able to, to get from within and, and move John up. He's been with the district almost eleven years, I think, in October. And he was one of the original parking supervisors in the orange garage when it first opened. So he's been with the garages from the very beginning. So we are happy that he is now in that position and look forward to his leadership and his deputy Drew's leadership as we move forward. Last, but not least, one of the more interesting ones is, y'all know, we do have a fisheries management program that we operate for the state on our property. And it's always interesting when water bodies are drained here, what happens. And what we've done is go in in the middle of the night, and I look at, where is Wendy? Wendy's team goes in and we try to save the fish. And we get the fish out and we move them to another water body. So that recently happened, we moved two thousand fish into Seven Seas Lagoon. We had ten percent, which were miscellaneous fish, such as catfish, seminole, killifish, and mosquito fish. Those very important. And then twenty percent large mouth bass, and then seventy percent were sunfish. So just something you never think about, but that we do here at the district. That is my report for the.
That's amazing. Well, Wendy, I would like to see video of catching two thousand fish. That sounds amazing.
We have some pictures.
Yeah, you'll have to share those with us.
I was particularly excited about the mosquito fish because those are the ones that eat the larvae, so. I like keeping those healthy and moving.
Good job. And John, thank you for stepping up and assuming your leadership role. We look forward to you working in that. Any questions for the administrator? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to general business. Item seven point one. Ms. Ferraro, good morning. How are you? You're going to be at the podium for a little while today, I think.
Yes, I'll step aside here and again and give others a chance, but you do have me for a little while here. So our first item is requesting board consideration and approval of the Fourth Amendment to the RCESC of Todd Labor Services Agreement amount for fiscal year twenty-six. A proposed operational service fee of thirty-nine million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, and an operational services fee cap one point five million dollars greater than the fee, proposed at forty million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. So just a little bit of background on what's happening in fiscal twenty-six. So each year, RCS is required to submit an annual adjustment to the district for their consideration, kind of a lengthy report describing all the operational services in the utility system that RCES will provide. We roll that all up every year, and this year it is a significant increase. I think last year we brought a one point seven percent increase to the board. This year is twelve point three percent, or four point three million above the prior year's number of fiscal twenty-five. It represents a level of effort of almost four hundred and thirty-one thousand hours at a total billable rate on an average annual basis of ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. The rate is increasing about six point seven percent. A six point seven percent increase in hours and five point three percent increase in rate. So all of this rolls up together to about that four point three million dollar increase. The increase in hours is driven by some increases in scope of services provided to the district in fiscal twenty-six. I think my partner Raftellus will go through some of that, but we are proposing an increase in three areas. Administration of the District's Title V air permit, increased volume in electric trading in the energy markets affiliated with changes in the energy supply portfolio, and then the fifty-third week that occurs in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. In our annual adjustments submitted for fiscal twenty-six, RCES also details the projects that are expected to be completed in twenty-six and the design and support services associated with those projects. This labor is capital, and it is included inside of the project budgets for that fiscal twenty-six program. This is also increasing significantly in fiscal twenty-six. We are anticipating an almost forty million dollar increase, growing into that from a forty million dollar program and portfolio annually, growing into about an eighty million dollar investment portfolio for the district to support a system expansions, asset replacement, redundancy and capacity needs in the utility systems. That will result in an increased need for personnel and headcount, and that proposal is about thirteen folks that will be phased in and hiring throughout fiscal year twenty twenty-six. That will result in an hours increase of almost eight, two hundred hours from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six, and about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in expected capital billable hours. The rate is only increasing about two point seven percent. That expansion of that team that delivers the capital program will be at various levels, starting from entry-level salary professionals through the different levels of program and project management. So we're getting a very favorable salary mix and labor mix in that team. So we're only going up about two point six percent in the rate that we bill for those services, going from about a hundred and three dollars an hour to one hundred and six dollars an hour. Overall, that total level of effort supporting the district's utility systems will be about four hundred and sixty thousand hours in fiscal twenty-six. And just as a reminder, RCES only bills actual hours, so we roll up all that detail every month and present a bill only for actual hours worked. The overall rate for those services, for operational services, and for that design and support services of the capital program is ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents. We like to be very transparent about what's inside of that rate for the district, so this is what makes up that ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents. I happen to report seventy-six percent of that goes directly to the folks working through wages and benefits. The other large percentages in that rate are overhead labor. Overhead labor is for the senior managers that support all of the utility systems and those teams that work across utilities, doing enterprise asset management, inventory purchasing, procurement, and warehousing. There is a small amount of overtime, about one percent on top of the billable rate. About two hundred and plus two-ten of the three hundred folks working at RCES are unionized cast members that are eligible for overtime, and they work an average overtime of five percent across all teams, and that equates to about a one percent lift on the rate for the whole team. and that equates to about a one percent lift on the rate for the whole team. Routine operating expenses are about three percent of that rate. They are things directly related to the operation of the folks working at RCS, office supplies, materials, personal protective equipment that goes on those folks on their bodies, arc flash rated clothing, things that protect them from hazards. RCS is part of the Walt Disney Company and does receive allocations from the broader Disney Enterprise for support of safety, security, human resources, are all of our recruiting processes, and that allocation is about a five percent lift. And then there's an overall margin of profit on the whole enterprise of five percent that is included in that ninety-two dollar and seventy-six rate. And I think that concludes my presentation. From a funding perspective, we'll talk a lot more about this, but the funding for this is included in the fiscal year twenty-six operating budget and is an expense to the utility systems. The capital labor is included in the project budgets, which can be funded through in-year capital, planned work capital, reserve funds, or from long-term financing or debt for the utility system. And at this time, I think I'll turn it over to Terry from Raftellus.
Terry, one second before you start, Supervisor Ziegler, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, good morning. For the record, my name is Terry Bovary with Raftellus. And I'm here to provide a brief presentation of the work effort that we did to evaluate the reasonableness of the fees and the budget being proposed today by RCS. We were tasked to provide an update to an evaluation that originally began back in twenty twenty-three. And the core focus or aim of this year's evaluation or update was to review the operational services fee and design support services fee and provide some benchmark analysis to determine the reasonableness. So this just lays out our approach in a little bit more detail. You know, in terms of the comparative analysis, we look at market economic trends, industry associations, other fees that other businesses and other municipal utilities are charging within the region to inform our analysis. Particularly also some analysis with some peer communities that we look at. And with that, we're able to evaluate the reasonableness. I think Ms. Ferraro presented an overview of the increase to both of the operational and the design support services fee. Here we have the operational services fee, and it's about a four point two million dollar increase. We provided a breakdown for you of what those drivers are. As she had mentioned, it's about a five percent base increase to the costs. And then you can see some of the other things that are driving up to the twelve percent roughly increase in the overall budget, which we believe to be reasonable and range with these comparative peer utilities. Once you make consideration for some of the additional adjustments, such as the lower attrition, meaning that, you know, we're retaining staff that's, that's budgeted in these positions longer to, to perform the services that are needed, as well as an increase in incremental services being provided. You know, and I think Ms. Ferraro can probably better explain some of that, but, you know, through our analysis, we know, for example, that some of the complications with the electric operations require the need for additional staffing to be able to manage that effectively. And so that contributed to the additional staff there. When we consider all these things, the twelve percent, in our opinion, is reasonable. As it relates to the design support services fee, this is really tied to the capital improvement plan of the system. And so the increase here is primarily for the additional services being provided and the additional capital programs being managed. So we felt like it was also reasonable on, on those grounds. We prepared a detailed technical memorandum that supports all the analysis that we did to arrive at these conclusions and would like to open up for any questions you may have, we can go to more detail.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Chris, do you have anything else on this item? Good? Chris, are you good? No more, okay. Thank you, I just, I would like to thank Chris and her team. I know I spent time with you before the meeting, I'm sure other supervisors did too. Really appreciate your attention to detail and, and most importantly, your focus on efficiencies and making sure we can deliver the highest quality service for the lowest possible cost. So thank you, it's, it's very evident in the work that you've done and working with Raftellus too, to help bring that to the table. So thank you so much, appreciate that. All right, do we have a motion to approve item seven point one?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, seven point two, Ms. Ferraro, you again.
Here we go. Back to my comfort zone, electric engineering, here we go. So this item is for request of a specific project to replace live front-to-dead front switches, and I'll go into those details. So I'm happy to report that this project eliminates the last of this equipment across the district's utility system. The project will remove the remaining twelve live front switches across the system. We're eliminating four and replacing eight with new modern equipment. So the picture on the top right is a picture of what these switches looked like back in their heyday, when they were brand shiny new, and the picture on the bottom is a picture of what they looked like when they've experienced an electrical fault. So these, this equipment was installed in the eighties and nineties, and it's reached the end of its useful life. It is uninsulated twelve thousand volt equipment, and it's subject to electrical arcs that come across there. It's also subject to snakes and frogs and all sorts of critters that crawl inside of these places looking for a nice home. At one point, there were one hundred of these switches across the district system, and this is the very last of that bunch. So working with Tiffany, again, I always have to thank Tiffany. We went out for bid for this scope of work in April and received four very good bids. And we are awarding bid recommendation today to the lowest responsive bidder of the official company that we have worked with before. So for this item today, we are requesting board review, consideration, and approval of three items. One, to increase the budget for this work. When we began design, we came to the board and proposed a budget of two point two million dollars. We did get some indications as we went through design that the cost was increasing, but we didn't want to come back to the board until we got out there and got the district administrator to execute contract C zero zero six eight two six with official company for construction services in the amount of one million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, plus ten percent contingency for a total amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Also asking for procurement allowance of one million dollars for owner furnished materials, those eight switches that will be replaced, we need to buy those new, modern standard switches. RCS will also incur about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a design and support services to support this construction project. And you can see the details in the table for the overall budget of three point six million. This is also going to use and almost fully subscribe our available funds on hand from prior financing in twenty twenty-one for our non-taxable bond series. And that concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve item seven point two?
Some move.
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item seven point three, Mr. Sanders, good morning, thank you so much, Chris.
Good morning, Cherry Yarborough, fellow members of the board, district administration. I'm here to present the next item, which will ultimately be a change order to existing contracts with Southland Construction, Consor Engineering, along with some design and support services to RCS. This is, has to do with the World Drive North Phase Three, Project T Force Main Project. Little overview, the Walt Disney Parks and Resort Expansion at the Magic Kingdom requires a new twelve-inch force main in order to support the increased sanitary needs for that area. And the sanitary main will eventually come down through the World Drive North Phase Three corridor. Coordination of the force main installation with the ongoing World Drive North Phase Three roadway project minimizes disruption, along with optimizing project efficiency in the area. We've all seen this exhibit many times before, you guys should know it by, by heart now, so. Basically, we'll be starting on the right side of the page, which is north, and going down through the project corridor, probably two-thirds of the way down to the south, just before the lift station at Seven Seas Project. Breakdown of the funding, it's a total of two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and that is broken down into two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars of design that was previously approved. Construction with a ten percent contingency is two million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Construction management and construction, engineering and inspection with a ten percent contingency on tops, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And RCS soft cost for design and support services, sixty-two thousand, which equals the asking amount. Little funding breakdown per the district's sanitary sewer service rules and regulations. The district funds, funds new sanitary infrastructure up to four times the estimated annual revenue for the new service, with the developer responsibility for all the remaining cost. That is also known as the CIAC, which is the Contribution in Aid of Construction. The customer contribution in aid of construction, of course, is a total of two million, six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred dollars. That leaves the district contribution of three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which is funded by the utility planned work budget. Our recommendation or requesting, what we're requesting the board to approve ultimately is three different things. First one will be a change order to contract C zero zero six one one zero, which is Southland Construction, for two million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars with ten percent on top. Also, for another existing contract with Consor Engineering, which is C zero zero six one zero six, for a hundred and forty-seven thousand, five, six hundred and fifty-three dollars with ten percent contingency. And then also to approve the RCS design and support allowance not to exceed sixty-two thousand dollars. Lots of numbers, any questions?
I'm just going to ask Ms. Higgins, did you track all the numbers? I was trying to track them with the presentation, I think they took in time, but they're good, okay. That's all. They're a little, they were presented a little differently than the agenda, I just want to make sure, thanks. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? All right, is there, thank you so much, Mr. Sanders. Is there a motion to approve item seven point three?
Some move.
Second? Discussion, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Do we get Supervisor Ziegler?
Aye, yes.
Thanks, all right, seven point four, Chief Ferrari, good morning, sir.
Good morning. We're requesting the approval to purchase two Freightliner Road Rescue Ultra Medic Medium Duty ambulances from Athene Fire Rescue in the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and four dollars. I'm pushing the wrong button here, sorry. There we go. District currently operates thirteen rescues, eight are frontline, fiber and reserve, and this provides all of our emergency medical service within our jurisdiction. Reserve fleet supports us during upstaffing and during special events such as marathons, and also while our frontline fleet is being maintained. And we're getting back into a replacement cycle of replacing two rescues a year. We call them rescues in the field, they're ambulances. And this, this project will purchase two new rescues from Athene Fire and Emergency, and it's funded through our fire apparatus capital replacement plan. We anticipate delivery in December of twenty-six, which would be FY twenty-seven. So we're trying to get into a cycle of taking delivery of two a year on a very volatile ordering process here in the, in the fire and EMS industry with ordering fire and EMS apparatus, it's very unpredictable right now. I don't entertain any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve item seven point four?
Some move.
Second? Discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chief Ferrari, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are now on to the Utilities Budget Workshop, item seven point five, Ms. Ferraro, welcome back.
Thank you so much, I was telling Mike Krkis, as an engineer, I just think of money as numbers and it's kind of fun. So you'll have to put up with me as I go through and pretend to be a finance person, but do want to thank Brian DeBoo and his team for all their help putting together, and of course Susan and Heidi for their support of all of this work, putting together the Utilities Division Budget for the district. So here we are again, we start every year looking at the cost base across all of the eight districts' utility systems. And in the table here, you'll see there are five primary cost bases for the utility. And there is an overall increase to the utility system this year from a cost perspective of twelve point three million dollars from fiscal twenty-five to twenty-six, or about a five point five percent increase. In our five primary buckets, purchased power and fuel is increasing due to volatility in commodity markets, changes in energy contracts, and then overall changes in the energy supply portfolio. Labor cost increases are primarily driven by the RCES C of Todd Labor Services Agreement Contract, but then a little bit of increase and uplift in the labor support from the district's team. Operating expenses, two reasons for the increase. The first is, this is kind of our daily routine expenses. They're increasing at about an inflationary rate of three point five percent, but there's a four million dollar increase proposed in the planned work expense programs funding critical maintenance and expense projects. Debt service costs are increasing. This results, this is a result of the one seventy-five million that's contemplated in incremental financing that was brought before the board, that the district is pursuing and considering, and the district will be hearing more about that as we step through that process. But this anticipates that payment coming and starting in fiscal twenty-six. The capital program is showing a one point five million dollar decrease to seventeen point five million from nineteen. That seventeen point five million is a net number. The gross number is twenty-five million, it reflects the sale of a district asset of seven point five million dollars. So the district is increasing its investment in capital that's collected through utility rates this year, but it looks like it's going down just because of a netting from sale of an asset. Cash flow requirements are going up just a little bit, that's just our sixty days cash on hand, so we make sure that we maintain the district's good standing. And the rate stabilization fund that was put in place in fiscal twenty-five is no longer required in twenty-six and not carried forward. Before we start looking at how much we need to collect from district utility customers, we look at any offsets to the utility cost base of two hundred and thirty-four point eight million dollars. And there are three offsets to that cost in twenty-six. The first is a planned withdrawal of seven million dollars in utility reserves, that's for planned and expense projects. We make a little bit of interest income, and we've been doing very well lately, kudos to Susan and Heidi on that. But we expect about point nine million in interest income and a little bit of franchise fees from our Solid Waste Team. We have a franchise for construction and demolition equipment. In fiscal twenty-five and prior years, there was an over collection in the fuel-based portion of purchased power and fuel, and by the district's tariffs and regulations, this needs to be returned to customers. So ten point four million dollars will be going back in the electric and natural gas rates to customers in twenty-six. It's about eighteen million dollars in adjustments to the cost base. So then we move into looking at how that shakes up for each of the eight utilities for the customers. So we go from two thirty-four to the bottom line in twenty-six of two sixteen. And then we look at the variances across each, each of the utilities, and this is a base roll-up in expenses. Significant variances are occurring in chilled water, hot water, and sewer, from a dollars perspective. All of that is directly related to investments in those systems, in the assets of those systems, and capital replacements or expense maintenance in those systems, or an increase in debt service costs that are proposed because we assign whatever utility gets the benefit of that work, their portion of the debt service costs. Reclaimed water has a big percentage, but it's a little bitty dollar amount. It's a small utility at two point four million overall base, but we're doing some increased capital work in that utility, so it's showing up as a large percentage, but it's a very small dollar amount relative to the other expenses in the utility system. Moving into the full rate recommendation, the bottom line amount for the overall utility rate for the district's eight utilities is one point seven percent. This is pretty favorable, pretty happy with this result, below kind of inflation. That does reflect the return of prior year's fuel costs adjustments. And we've kind of talked about why those variations in the cost base and the percentages by each of the utilities. The next few slides come from a comparison made in the annual utility report that's completed by Lidos Engineering, and they go out and they do a little survey of the district's rates. They could put on apples-to-apples basis with our neighboring utilities. So this will take us through the utilities that we have comparisons to. So if you look at the chart, the first blue bar is the fiscal twenty-five rate. You can see the utility electric rate for the district is going down a little bit in twenty-six due to that fuel return. And we have two of our neighbors there compared on the right-hand side, and that was rates as of January of twenty-five. As you know, the district has a primarily underground electric system, and some of our neighbors have had some uplifts due to storm riders and costs that have been incurred. And the district very fortunate to have that underground system that we don't incur a lot of costs or damage or interruptions during those severe weather events. Our natural gas system is very small, very well-designed and installed, and all of our increases in the past years have been within the capacity of the system, which results in a very favorable rate if you look at the comparison to our neighboring utilities. which results in a very favorable rate if you look at the comparison to our neighboring utilities. Solid waste rates, very happy to hear, and I know, I think Terry might have left from Rev Tellus, but he's very tuned into this. It's the first year our cost base and solid waste has stabilized. Happy to report we were flat on the cost base this year and with an increase in volumes expected in waste pickups and tonnage, the rate is actually going down. We are still slightly above our neighboring utilities. We use these two comparables because they also own and operate their own solid waste fleet, just like the district does. I know there's some uplifts across those systems as well. Hopefully we'll start to compare. I never like to be higher than anyone, like to be the most efficient and the most cost-effective. So hopefully next year, we kind of even the playing field with those neighbors. From a water and sewer perspective, we bundle those together, even though the rate is increasing, three point seven percent in fiscal twenty-six, still can compare very favorable to our neighbors. Replacing the rate, it is still priced very favorably compared to potable or drinking water so that we encourage the use of the reclaimed water for cooling tower makeup and irrigation in the district and not that precious resource of the Florida aquifer. Chilled and hot water rates, again, we talked that these are going up because of investments in these systems. The chilled water rate is going up thirteen percent. The hot water rate is shown as going up forty-four percent, but it's a little bit cattywampus. If you remember, in the middle of this year, we had a meter failure at the energy plant, and we needed to reduce the rate because we were reading significantly more volumes. So that reflects that mid-year rate adjustment so that we tuned up the revenue collected versus the expenses for that utility. That is anomalous due to that mid-year rate. It will correct itself. So I won't be able to use cattywampus again as a term in fiscal twenty-seven, so y'all have to remember that one. Okay, Susan, here's my favorite slide, the income statement. I gotta loosen up for this one. So we have four, this is really tough. I tell you, you can't give these folks enough credit that do this for a living. This is super tough. So four different columns that are shown here, the fiscal twenty-five budget, the fiscal twenty-five year-end forecast, that variance in the year, the fiscal twenty-six budget, and then the variance year-to-year. So from a bottom-line perspective, looking at fiscal twenty-five, this is a May forecast. We have just tied out with the district's team on a June forecast. Probably will be bringing that to the board for the remaining budget workshops in September. But for fiscal twenty-five, we are looking at six point five million dollars in opportunity if you go down to the bottom line on the budget. So about a three percent variance in that cost base, primarily driven by the non-fuel components of purchased power and fuel and lower expenses. Coming across to fiscal twenty-six, we are showing a seven million dollar deficiency in that budget. That is intentional. That's that seven million dollars that we talked about that will be withdrawn from reserves. And the overall very bottom line is our debt service coverage, very important ratio for our bond covenants. Looking at a one point three seven ratio in fiscal twenty-six, which is above the required one point two percent. So our ratings agencies look favorably on that performance. And that concludes my presentation. Sorry to go so quickly. Are there any questions?
You should bring back the definition of cattywampus for everyone. I actually wrote it down the first time you said it. I know what it means, but great word.
Probably that's the same thing, but you know.
Any questions for Ms. Ferrari? All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all the detail and all of the work. Again, I know you spent a lot of time with me. I'm sure you did with others before today's meeting too, and just really appreciate answering all the questions and doing such a great job with this. Thank you so much. And also to Ms. Higginbotham, I know you were a critical part of this as well. Is there a motion to approve, or questions? I'm sorry.
No.
No approval.
No motion, just a presentation. Oh, forgot, this is workshop. Thanks so much. Thank you. I need to have those guardrails that Chaplain Spence talked about, just on the rules of some of these things, I think. Mr. Payne should sit closer, or the clerk, someone. All right. Item seven point six, budget workshop with Ms. Higginbotham. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to give an update on the Ad Valorem budget, which includes the general fund and the debt service fund. Always start with assessed values. That's the basis that the millage rate is applied to in order to get the tax revenue. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which starts on October first, we have assessed value from the Orange and Osceola County Property Praiser of a total of seven point seven billion dollars. That's eight point eight seven percent increase over the prior year of sixteen point three. And we know some items that have been added to the role is the Island Tower Hotel next to the resort, next to the Polynesian, the Tiana's Bio Adventure, and various room renovations across property leading to this increased assessed value. With the increase in our assessed value, we are able to lower our millage rate. So starting with debt service, we are lowering this rate from four point one seven mils to three point eight four mils. And our operating millage rate from eight point nine one three mils to eight point five eight three six mils. And for a total of thirteen point oh eight three to twelve point four two three six. This is the same millage rate that we presented in July that the board approved to be sent to the taxpayers on their trim notices. When we talk about the operating millage rate, we always compare that to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate calculated that will give you the same revenue as prior year, taking into account new construction. And the calculated rollback rate is eight point four oh four six, and our operating millage rate of eight point five eight three six is two point one three percent above the rollback rate. Looking at our budgeted revenues, we have a total revenue budget of two hundred and twenty million. That is three point five eight percent over our prior year's budgeted revenue. And you can see that our Ad Valorem taxes, ninety-six percent of our total revenue. This is also a seven million dollar increase in our revenue. And another item to note is we did increase our estimated revenue for permits and fees from our building department in anticipation of the upcoming volume next year. Total expenditures, two hundred and thirty-one million. This is a five point three percent increase over prior year. Operating expenditures, a hundred and sixty-six million, eighty-five million for labor. That does include anticipated employee increases as we're getting an increase for the district's contribution, a one percent increase in regular class employees and a two point four percent increase in special risk. And the majority of the fire department employees are in the special risk class. Then going down to the non-operating, you see the five point two coming in that covers in, comes in from drainage reserves. Currently have a balance right around seven point four million, so we have enough to cover. So this is for work that's done on the outside drainage system where we have previously collected fees, and the money can only be used for that system. Debt service, sixty-six million, consistent with prior year. And currently, the sixty-six million is our schedule up until twenty thirty-seven, barring any additional debt, refinancing, or anything like that, which we don't anticipate in fiscal year twenty-six. Tax collector fees come from the Orange County and Osceola County Tax Collector. They actually collect our taxes, charge us a fee. And at the end of the year, they true up with their actual costs, but this is what we're expecting. And then two point nine million is the overall cost of insurance for the district. I'll be going through some slides covering the various departments and divisions, and starting with administration, which includes administration, procurement and contracting, HR, finance and legal. Those combined have a total budget of ten million, thirty-two positions. And you can see a slight decrease in other expenditures, which is due to our budgeted legal expenses going down. Security and emergency management, this is Tanya's department. She has a total budget of two point seven million, and there's two positions, small but mighty. And the, most of their total expenditures are for security in the parking garage, a little bit for this building, and we do expect a decrease in that area. So you'll see other expenditures going down. Technology services has a total budget of ten million for fiscal year twenty-six, fourteen positions. And a lot of their other expenditures is repairs and maintenance for the various software we have used within the district. And we also have a planned work IT projects and that Rhieny works on every year, keeping up to date with. We have various safety department where contractors and permit techs can communicate via texting, not just telephone. In the comm center, a recording system that will record the nine-one-one dispatcher's voice, which we already have, as well as screens that they go to during the call. A DMZ server replacement over at the garage, the parking signs. They're called tombstones that have the number of parking spaces available as you go up to the floors, upgrade on that. And then again, in building and safety, moving their permitting system, Acela to the cloud. Speaking of building and safety, they have a total budget of eight point six million. They have four additional positions budgeted due to the increased activity that we're seeing with permitting for a total of forty-nine positions. And then just along with new positions, we budget to continue all of the employees, but with little increase when we have more for their CLE licenses and to make sure that they're compliant there. And then as our revenue increases, we did increase our budget to six million. Our credit card fees also go along with that and increase. For the fire department, we have a total budget of sixty-one point two million, total budgeted headcount of two hundred and forty-nine positions. And that's including four new positions, two in fire prevention and two in the comm center. For our capital program, the fire chief has a ongoing program to replace his apparatus on a maintenance schedule, two rescues every year, and then engines as they come due and squads. So last year, we started this where we reserved some money for this so we don't have to pay for everything that comes up at one time. Two million dollar fire engine, we stretched that out over three years. And with the lead time going up to thirty-six months, we're able to order and make payments each year, which helps us keep our millage rate flat. So he has for next year, payment two on a truck, payment two on a squad, payment two on a rescue, and then one payment on the rescue that you approved today. And I think he's been at the last few board meetings getting all these in before year end, so. Yep, yep. He also has in his capital a trench rescue package for his training and rescue in case we have to do that. They'll be prepared. In environmental sciences, six point seven million total budget, thirty-four employees, and their budget for other expenditures went down. In fiscal year twenty-five, we budgeted an amount for chemicals, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Due to Wendy's great application, the chemicals were effective, so we didn't spend all the money this year, and we don't need that much next year. Facilities, operation and maintenance, this includes the building maintenance as well as fleet and all of the landscaping around the roads, total budget of eighteen point five million. With the building, we also have a planned work program there. Some items to note in fiscal year twenty-six for the admin building, replacing our window tent. We do have money set aside for continuing the rebranding. We think this is our last phase. We're now up to doing all of the buildings and the signs on the buildings. We have a direct capture exhaust system for Fire Station Two and fire gear storage racks in all the fire stations. And then for their capital, we have a million dollars to replace twenty-one vehicles. Ten of those are actually leases that we will be purchasing. Our drainage system, this is the department that receives the five point two million dollars from Drainage Reserve. So, but their total expenditures are seven and a half million. And we have the Structure 405 rolling over, that's two point four million. And then we have Structure 405A of two point one million. These structures are over fifty-five years old, and we do have to replace gates and wiers and things like that. Also included in this budget is keeping the clinals clean and so the water continues to flow. And then lastly, our public works division. This includes engineering, roadways, construction, GIS, and recently transferred from facilities to public works is the parking garage. Total budget of forty point eight million, and this does include thirty-eight people. So as you may or may not be aware, but I'll let you know, we do expense items such as paving and improvements to our roadways. So we have eight million dollars budgeted for our milling and reserving program, which is two million above last year with six million. We are continuing, speaking of our guardrails, one million dollars on our guardrails to finish up our replacement of all of our guardrails on property. Two million for overhead trust replacements, that is a rollover. Traffic sign replacements of two million. Lime ramp repairs at the garage, the lime garage ramp repairs. And we're rolling over the master drainage model, which we started but have not been completed. And then also part of this I mentioned was construction. There are some projects in construction that will be charged to public works. Fire Station One Conex Box relocation. Fire Station One Bay Door replacement and lighting, and Fire Station Four Generator replacement. And our fund balance, so we are budgeting a total ending fund balance of forty-eight point seven million. And that is around seven million over our prior year, which was forty-one million. You'll see the different components. We have two million dollars for emergency repair and replacement. The two point four million dollars, that is for the fire apparatus we have set aside. Seven and a half million for our property praiser settlements. We increase that by one million. And then the thirty-six point eight million is what is our available fund balance. That also includes our required calculation of two months' worth of our expenditures to make sure that we can get through the months of October and November since we don't get our tax revenue until December. And then just an update on the timeline. Today, we had the update on the workshop. We have two public hearings, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, where we will bring, and Chris will bring the utilities as well, a tentative and then the final. That's all for me.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Any questions for Ms. Higginbotham? Seeing none. I just have a few comments, if it's okay. First, I'd just like to thank everyone. I know we have talked a lot about the budget for a couple of months now, and it is apparent that not only our district administrator and our CFO are really harnessing strong leadership on every single line item in this budget, which I'm personally very grateful for, but our entire team across the board. I spent a lot of time meeting with a lot of you last month, and it's very apparent that each of you really took ownership for your cost centers and brought forward the best, most efficient production you could. And so I just wanna thank everyone here and everyone who's not here that participated in that process. It's very clear you worked very hard to bring some numbers down. Some particular call-outs, Chief Ferrari, I really appreciate your long-term planning work plan to make sure that we have the capital that we need and we're able to finance it in the way that we can. And that forward thinking and keeping our fleet and our equipment modernized is deeply appreciated. So we're not up against the wall and trying to find something and paying the highest price. So really appreciate your leadership on that. Wendy, wanna thank you for bringing down those chemical costs. I know that you take personal pride in managing the lab in the way that you do and making sure that we are compliant and also fiscally responsible is very appreciated and recognized. On the road construction, this is gonna be a big piece in the coming years, I know, Western Way, and we keep hearing World Drive. Mr. Sanders, really appreciate you, and I could not be more grateful than to have Stephanie Cupeluce at the helm as we endure these big, huge road projects and bringing your experience and leadership to the fore is deeply appreciated. We are very fortunate to have your experience at the table. And lastly, on the legal fees, I know when I came in and was asking for a review of historical, sort of what was going on at the district, I know that with legal fees at the district were extremely high. I know the district administrator works really hard to bring in an amazing general counsel in Mr. Payne. So bringing in some in-house leadership has substantially reduced our overhead in terms of legal service delivery. But in addition to that, I know the district administrator and Mr. Payne also worked very much to resolve some legal disputes and make sure that we are focused on the business of the district. And we really appreciate that. Now we are actually focused on doing what we're supposed to be doing. So thank you very much for your leadership. We will not be- leadership. We will not be in those tangential areas, so thank you. Um, so any other comments from anyone? None? All right. I would like to remind everybody that next month, because of the budget, we have two meetings at different times. Um, on September the twelfth, we have a meeting at five oh five PM, and on September twenty-sixth, we have a meeting at five thirty PM. These are required by law, I believe, Mr. Payne, to be after five o'clock because they involve the budget, so. All right, any, any other comments on that? Any other business? All right, seeing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.